Good morning. I want to call to order the meeting of the January 27, 2014, meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you would stand with us, please. Commissioner Pettis Reed will lead our prayer and our prayers. Pettis?
Shall we pray? Most gracious heavenly Father, we're so thankful for this day you've given us and this opportunity to get it together, to go over the things that affect this county. Father, we ask that you give us the ability to make the right decisions, to look at the things that are happening, to prepare ourselves for these. Father, we ask that you watch over and protect those that are responsible for this county. And Father, we're so thankful for all the many blessings that we have, but may we always remember that the things that we do have come from you. Watch over, protect us, and guide us. We offer this prayer in the Son's holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Sledge.
To the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Call the roll, please, gal.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Jim Aberwater.
Here.
Veronica Buchanan.
Here.
Will Jordan. Mike Kush. Craig Lynch.
Here.
Chip Pinion. Pettis Reed.
Here.
Steve Sandlin. Mike Vaught.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, gal. Approval of our January 13 meeting minutes. A call on Vice Chair Craig Lynch.
I just saw my motion that we approved of January 13.
Motion to approve.
Seconding.
And a second. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Election of Chair and Vice Chair for 2014. Rhonda?
The nominating committee would like to nominate Jeff Phillips as Chairman and Craig Lynch as Vice Chairman.
Any other nominations? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Wish all elections were that easy. Any items withdrawn or deferred, Doug?
No, sir.
Okay. Item number seven, bond and plat extensions. Item A is Stackhorn subdivision request for a 12-month plat extension. Eric?
Actually, I'll take care of that, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, Doug.
This is a subdivision. The plan development was approved back in, I think, 2007, maybe early 2008. The plat, preliminary plat for development was approved in 2008. Since that time, there's really been no activity on the property that asks for extensions to the plat approval since that time. This is a piece of property. It's very, it really, it's right next to, I guess that's Bedford County, on the very southern end of the Rutherford County on Midland Road. We've actually had some, we had a meeting with the owner of the property and their design engineer. It's possible that we will be seeing some changes to this, possibly bringing in as a new plan development. Some of the situation, or the factors in that subdivision have changed some, so they're kind of looking at that right now. So, we're optimistic that maybe this would be the last time you might see this one as a potential, as a possible plat extension. But outside of that, they are asking to continue the approval that they got back in 2008. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Recommended by staff?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I mean, if this subdivision, I mean, quite frankly, under our new regulations, if this subdivision were coming today, they'd be allowed, I think, two different extensions, or maybe just one extension, and that would be it. But this was approved under the old regulations, and there was no limit to the number of extensions they could ask for.
Any motions approved?
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight, submitted for preliminary plan approval. Item A, Nature Walk subdivision. The item number is 14-1001. One hundred and seventy-three lots on 75 acres, zoned TUD, located along Franklin Road, KNR Construction LLC is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you said, this is the Nature Walk subdivision. As you recall, the zoning of this was approved, actually, back in 2012 as a plan development. This is part of the original Spring House development. Just to kind of give you your bearing, this is Franklin Road down here. Shores Road is up in this area, right through here. These sections here of Spring House have been approved already, or at least we've seen plats for them, but there are a number of houses here in this area. They zoned this portion of the property down here for the plan development, and this is the first plan that we've seen for this particular subdivision. This actually does come under our new regulations, so as such, you're not going to see as much detailed information with the preliminary plan as you normally would have seen, as far as grading and drainage, that kind of information. It's not going to be taken care of more at a staff level with the construction drawings, but you can kind of see, and let me zoom in here just a little bit to kind of give you an idea of what we're looking at. This is the area in question that they're looking at right now. This area kind of in the hatched, or what's got the border around it, anyway. This is all future out in this area, but you do see they have some of the common area with walking trails, not shown here, but they are proposing walking trails as part of the plan development. For the most part, it does appear to meet the requirements. There may be a couple outstanding things, maybe just a little more information on the open space, street name determinations, just to make sure that they're good with emergency communications, 911, those kind of issues. Nothing that we should hold up anything for. But I'll turn it over to Mr. Hill with any, just general drainage concerns or anything.
And as Doug said, with, under our new system, it looks a little different than what we've looked at in the past. And so, in this case, the engineer submitted a lot of the drainage and construction plans, and I've had a chance to review those. That actually wasn't required. And so, in this case, I already know roughly what they're talking about grading and drainage-wise, but that wouldn't always be required. So, I just kind of want to make a point that this time I know what's going on, but I may not always, but the preliminary plan, it'll come in a construction phase. And so, but from an engineering side, everything looks good out there. There's, that area has a lot of sink holes, but we've looked pretty hard at the flooding. And the design engineer, I feel like he has a really good handle on the drainage, and I feel comfortable with it.
Doug, is it confusing at all that lot 50s on both sides of the road? I know it's just the common space, but I was just curious.
I don't think, I mean, in the grand scheme of things, I mean, it's all going to be deeded to the homeowner association anyway, probably. Plus, it goes over here and here, and even crosses the street into the future area. I mean, if we think it's going to be, we can always have them renumber. I don't think that's going to be, not a bad question, though.
Eric, is that Bueller Rose Drive, is that going to be used as construction going back?
Well, they currently, they're coming in off Shores Road, and so...
Coming all the way through there?
Yeah. So, they'll probably work mostly from Shores Road, and then they're going to have to do a large structure there at the end of this section to cross over that drainage way that goes through there. So, I'd say this section one, and probably that Sophie Hill Court and Ruby Oaks Lane, that will probably access through Shores Road, and then as they get to the Franklin roadside, they'll probably come out that way.
Ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented, subject to staff comments.
I second it.
Motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Item nine, submitted for final plat approval. Item A, Waldron Crossing, Section 2. The item number is 14-2004. Ten lots on 4.996 acres, located RM, located along Lebanon Pike, US 231, Waldron's Crossing LLC applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this is part of the Waldron Crossing subdivision located on the east side of Lebanon Road. This is just a continuation of the subdivision. It's consistent with the preliminary plat that was approved back in 2007 for this development. Really, staff didn't have a whole lot of comments on this particular plat. It was, appeared to be in pretty good order. Everything looks good with it. Don't know if you had any comments?
Comments? Eric?
No.
Okay. Questions?
Motion approved?
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 9B, Mack Baskin Minor Subdivision. The item number is 14-2003. Two lots on 14.11 acres, located RL, which is Low Density, located along East Jefferson Pike. Stan Baskin is the applicant. This plat includes waiver requests for fire hydrant location, private easement width, lots, size for lots on a private easement, and off-site soils.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is along East Jefferson Pike, along the north side. Really, it's a little unusual in the fact that we're receiving this, but in the fact that this is actually, there's a number of waivers that are associated with this. But the reason for that is the fact that this is to settle an estate, Will. You can see here, Lot 2, there's an existing house structure on the property. This is the original property line right through here. What the proposal is, is to dissolve this line. This property here would be deeded to the folks to the south, yes, the south, which would be the Leslie's property. This would become its own standalone track. Now, as you can see, there are existing access easements through here. There are 25-foot access easements to access this house back through here. So, what's happening is, this is becoming its own lot, which is about a little less than two acres, and then this remainder is going to be deeded down through here. So, it's really, there's no new development here. There's an existing house here that the Leslie's own, and this, rest of this acreage will be deeded to them. Now, Mr. Stan Baskin is here to answer any questions or correct me if I'm misunderstanding the request. But because of what they're proposing here, the waivers that they're asking for, first of all, the fact that the easement isn't 50 feet, again, these are existing easements, they're asking for the waiver to that provision. They're asking provision, a waiver to the provision that this lot being on a private easement's under five acres. They're also asking for the fire hydrant requirement. It's not so much in this area that this line down through here cannot support a fire hydrant. It's the fact that this is so far off the road that even if you put one right here, it wouldn't make any difference. It'd still be outside 1,000 feet. Plus, these structures are existing. And then finally, this area here is the soils area, and it's going to be remaining on Lot 1, even though it's serving the house on Lot 2. So, those are the waivers that they're asking for. Besides that, I mean, the plat, there are a few comments that he's going to have to, that the survey will have to address, namely putting the notes for the waivers, if this is approved, on the plat. There's a note here, actually, I'm not seeing it on here. It might be further down. Up there is. Yeah, the, there needs to be, since this is a subdivision, it has to be approved by a planning commission, needs to be two signature lines here. One for the chairperson, which he has, and then one for the secretary of the planning commission as well. So, really, what I would consider minor comments, but still, they would need to be addressed before we would allow it to be recorded. So, again, Mr. Baskin is present, and we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Just for clarification, this is all family-related?
It's all to settle an estate, correct.
Those soil sites, is that the primary soil site or the backup?
Stan? Both. Let's see if I can zoom down in there. Yeah, it looks like they've got an existing, this is their soil area right now, and then there's a area identified for backup.
Go over that right-of-way easement again, did what you said.
Sure. You go over?
Yeah, go over it again. I didn't quite understand.
Well, the existing right-of-way easements to the property, as you can see, right through here, they're 25-foot access easements. So, our regulations require a new subdivision of 50-foot access easements, but since these are existing, they were just asking to, just to keep it the way it was, as opposed to trying to provide a 50-foot easement.
There's two there, side by side, is that right?
Yeah, there's utility. Yeah, there's utility easement. This is, this is the access easement right here.
So, they're both using, they're both using that one?
Right. And this is a public utility. And, well, I don't know about this house here. Mr. Baskin, if you want to get up to the podium, you might be able to answer that a little better than I can. It kind of looks, yeah, it kind of looks that way. This house accesses that easement as well?
The Lisle uses the ingress/egress easement, but not the utility easement.
Got you. Forgive me, I was pronouncing the last name wrong.
That's okay.
Sorry.
Doug, basically, what we're doing is changing the lines around to settle the estate, and nothing else changes.
Pretty much, yes, sir.
I'll make the motion to approve. No comments?
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. Any other questions? Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Stan, for being here. Item 10, submitted for site plan approval. Item A, Benchmark Companies Mulch Yard. The item number is 13-3030. New construction of 7,425 square feet on 6.75 acres, zoned EAC, which is Employee Activity Center, located at the intersection of Miller Road and Sledge Road, Benchmark Companies applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This, as you stated, this property is located along Miller Road, here at the Miller and Sledge Road intersection. The Board of Commissioners approved the rezoning of this property at their October 17, 2013 meeting. The applicant's now proposing to construct the facility on the property for a wholesale mulch yard. This item was originally on the December 13, I'm sorry, 9, 2013 planning commission agenda, but a few days before the meeting, they wanted to kind of flip-flop the site where the building and everything was, so we just told them they needed to resubmit at that time. You'll see on your table, there's an alternate landscape plan, as well as, there should be a letter there, kind of going over the reasons for that plan. As far as the site is concerned, I think there's a few engineering items that I'm going to leave Mr. Hill to address, but something I wanted to address on the planning end. When they zoned this property, they zoned it for about, roughly, it was about six and three-quarter acres. I don't know if the planning commission may recall that or not, but you're seeing right here, this dark line, you can see on plan and here on the screen, this is actually the area on the legal description that was zoned. Now, for reasons unbeknownst to myself, the track that they're wanting to carve off is actually here to here. So, this area right through here is actually still zoned RM. It's not zoned EAC. And it looks like this area here is the area that they're not asking to be zoned, but it is, because this is the property line here, that, again, that they're wanting to carve off. Now, everything that they have is on the zoned portion of the property, so in that regard, I don't have much of a problem with the site plan moving forward, but the applicant is aware that they're going to have to come back and ask for zoning of this, since it's part of that property, and they're wanting to use some of this existing planning out here as part of their buffer yard. So, that's something I wanted to bring to the planning commission's attention, as far as, I don't know if it was a surveying error, exactly what happened there. Maybe the applicant's got a little more information on that, but that was something I did want to bring to your attention. But I'll let Mr. Hill take care of the drainage.
We've worked with the engineer and been through this plan pretty thoroughly, and there's just a few small little things. It's just more detail we need on the plans. It's something I can work with the engineer and get that worked out, but if you guys did approve, I would ask that you made it contingent upon us, getting those few engineering details worked out.
Mr. Huddleston's here. If we can ask him what to deal with with that, even your soils areas outside of that.
Now, it's still will be on the same property, so, I mean, as far as that's concerned. It's just, it does have to be zoned, but yeah, you're right.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. I'm Bill Huddleston, President of Huddleston Steel Engineering. As Doug said, we have been working on this site plan for a while. During that process, at some point, my client hired another surveyor to survey out the property, and he didn't contact us to let us know, or to find out what we were, what we'd already gotten rezoned. So, a different surveyor laid out the property. We've asked for zoning and asking for site plan approval on what is zoned properly, and the client may come back and ask for zoning of the rest in the future, because right now, all they can use it for is a soil site.
That's not heavy treed right there, but it is separating it. I guess that's 24 right on the other side of it there, right?
That's right. And it's pretty interesting why he's asking for the variance on the landscaping. If he sticks with deciduous trees in that buffer, the leaves will start coming into the mulch and hurt the quality of the mulch that he's transporting out there.
In the letter that's provided by the landscape architect, it pretty much says that. Looking at the landscape plan that they're provided, again, the zoning ordinance, when we redid the landscape regulations a few years ago, even before we undertook the new zoning ordinance, we put a provision in there to allow, in situations where there may be circumstances that would dictate the need for an alternative plan, rather than having to make them go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a variance, if there was a way to handle that through the planning commission, you are granted the authority to approve an alternative, what's called an alternative landscape scheme, as opposed to making them go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. If there was a, if there was no way to work out the differences, then they would have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, but I don't think what they're proposing here is unreasonable.
Well, Bill, will this come back next month, the planning commission, to rectify these lot lines?
Yes, he indicates he wants to come back and do that. Doug, will we unzone or re, go back to the existing zoning on the adjacent track to the north there? What will we do there?
We probably, we probably should, quite frankly, just because, I mean, there's not going to be a whole lot you can do with this little leftover area, anyway. So, as part of the zoning request for this, we could just take this and rezone it back to RM to put it the way it needs to be.
Square everything out?
Right. We have that ability to do that.
The surveyor, two surveyors, two different opinions. Does that cause anybody heartburn?
No, not at all. He just didn't know exactly what the dimensions were that we were working with.
One other issue I did want to bring to your attention. You'll see the note on the site plan down here about the closest fire hydrant located 2,400 feet to the north. Requirements for the, for our site plans are that a fire hydrant needs to be located within 1,000 feet of the, of the lot in question. Now, the regulations that we have, since it doesn't look like, after talking with CUD, it doesn't appear that a fire hydrant could be supported in this area. Now, the building that they're proposing, they have the option to sprinkle the building. If they do that, the regulations do allow them to do that in lieu of that, as opposed to having to ask for a variance to the fire hydrant requirement. If they don't want to do that, they're going to have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to ask for the variance, but if they do sprinkle that, then that's, that is, that is an option that they have.
They got the water there, though.
Yes, sir, the water is there. It's just it probably wouldn't be enough to support a hydrant, is what it is.
Is it line size or a pressure?
Well, I think at this point, I'll ask Ms. Wood if she'd want to address that.
Good morning. Jennifer Wood from CUD. Your question is about the line size or pressure?
Yeah, is it line size or pressure?
Yeah. Of course, when, we've talked about this before, whenever I go to look at a proposed fire hydrant, I have to look at the anticipated flow and pressure at the site, as well as anything that's in the immediate vicinity as how it's going to affect the existing customers. In this particular location, because of elevation and because of line size, the volume isn't there, and the pressure isn't there either, when I look at that proposed location. So, it doesn't meet the 500 gallons a minute, 20 PSI, so. Any other questions? Thank you.
Doug, I have a question back to the landscape request on that waiver. Do they own the surrounding property, the one that they're carving off? Did someone sold them this tract?
It's 2,400 feet.
Because the second part of that request talks about not wanting to put the landscape buffer because of the concrete type bins that the mulch is going to be housed in.
Right, and that's down here, right. My understanding, this is what they're being sold, is this property right through here. This is all off of a larger tract. If you remember, this wasn't an existing property. One of the requirements was that they go ahead and track this off as a plat. Now, they haven't done that yet, but that's, that's something that is easily taken care of, but...
Well, the reason I say that is because it says here that it'll provide no aesthetic value, well, it won't to them, but it might to the people on the other side of those concrete barriers, so.
Right, but, I mean, they are, I think part of it, too, was, well, the shrub, I think they were afraid that the shrubs were going to be, you know, with the concrete barrier right through here with those bins, that they may not be viable because of the heat coming from those. But, but, I mean, there is an existing tree line right in this area, and, but this was all part of the Brothers' property. All this around it was part of that.
Doug, along those same lines of what Rhonda was asking, so, they have concrete, basically a concrete wall that's running, as this thing is oriented, north and south, I guess.
Correct.
I don't know if that's 100 feet or so from the property line. But these concrete walls will have little short shrubs on the backside of those?
Well, no, they're asking, if, they're asking to not put the shrubs in as part of their alternate plan.
They show here, they're asking not to put those.
Well, those are trees. Yeah, those are, I don't think those are the shrub. I think those are just the trees, what they're looking at, because they're asking to remove the shrubs entirely, not to have to put the shrubs out there.
Yeah, I can, I can see where that would make a little sense to put little short shrubs behind that concrete wall, but I would like to see some sort of trees between the property line and those concrete walls. I'm assuming that these trees on the property line are probably growing on the neighbor's property and just kind of overhanging there. I may be wrong.
Without a survey of it, it's hard to say, right, right.
I would think that they need some sort of evergreen trees between those concrete walls and the next door neighbor.
Well, right. I think that's, that's what, I mean, these are, this line right through here, this is, sorry, this is where those bins are going to be, kind of right in this area, and these are the trees right through here, so they are on the backside.
Trees and not little short shrubs.
Correct, yeah. They're just all evergreen, as opposed to a mixture of evergreen, deciduous, and shrubs.
What about when you turn the corner there, across the top of that, the property line? That is the area I was thinking about.
Right. Yeah, no, this is, yeah, these are the, these are the bins right through here, but you can also see the, these are the trees in this area.
They're staying or coming out?
No, these are, these are all proposed. These are proposed trees, all of these right down through.
Not asking for those to go away?
No, no, they're asking, that's what they're proposing to plant.
Yes.
Doug, the, the line to the right, the dotted line that we're rezoning, and then the one that is really intended for the property line over to the far right over there, are we approving something that doesn't have proper soils and to meet the standards? And is this causing you, the staff, any heartburn at all?
I don't think so. With the fact that they're going to be coming here in the next month or so to take care of this, I mean, the fact that the soils are on the same property that they're using, so the soils don't necessarily have to be zoned to do that, but over time, if they want to utilize this area, they would not be able to do that. And if they're paying for the property, they might as well pay for what, or use what they're being, what they're paying for. So, the quick answer to your question is, is this really causing me any heartburn? Besides the fact that we just need to be cleaned up, I don't think it's causing any heartburn from a site plan perspective, no.
Is there, I think Mr. Huddleston mentioned a minute ago about the, no particular issue with the survey. It was just a, kind of a misunderstanding, and they're going to come back. If that, have you seen that survey? Does that property line?
I haven't seen the survey.
Okay.
Just, we saw a legal description when we did the... Just, we saw a legal description when we did the zoning, but that, that's the only thing I've seen.
Is, is there any way to approve today, this month, contingency that, on that line coming in, and not, for, for the applicant not to have to come back?
As far as rezoning the property, you mean? No. It, it, since that's rezoning the property, that requires a legislative action. It would have to follow the same process as any rezoning we look at.
Okay.
Doug, can we make approvals contingent on them coming back and cleaning up the zone line? I'd like to see it cleaned up on the tract to the north, too. I don't want to leave a portion of that tract.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any reason not to. What we could do is say it needs to be all taken care of before CO is issued or something like that. I don't have any problem with that.
Jeff, you ready?
Yeah. I make a motion that we approve contingent on staff comments and contingent on the applicant coming back and cleaning up the zone line on both tracks.
Second motion.
Heard the motion. Any other questions or comments? All of us in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 10B, Holton Concrete, the item number is 13-3032. New construction of 3,200 square feet addition on 9.65 acres, zoned RM, pre-existing CUP approved in 2005. Location is 8682 Cobb Road. Thomas C. and Barbara Holden are the applicants, Doug.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along Cobb Road on the south side to the east of Manchester Highway. As you stated as well, the conditional use permit for the property was approved back in August of 2005. The applicant's proposing to make a 3,200 square foot addition, which is this area right through here, to the existing building for storage purposes, which would make the building a grand total size of 1,1,700 square feet. Really, the, the site plan itself was in pretty good order. The only couple issues that we saw on here was, the first showing on our GIS maps, it shows it as two separate tracks, it shows a property line kind of through this area of the existing building. Now, information submitted by the design engineer says that it was deeded as one track. Now, I'd like to see a little more proof to that, rather than just that statement. Also, the other issue had to do with a cost estimate for this. The, the reason we'd like to see the cost estimate for the addition is that if it meets a certain threshold as far as the cost versus the assessed value of the property in the building, the whole site would have to be brought up to the standards of the landscape, current landscaping regulations. I haven't seen that yet. I don't anticipate it being enough to trigger, to trigger that, but I would like to see the, the estimates for that. But besides that, the, the site plan itself is in pretty good order, and I don't know if, I don't think you've had any issues. Did you?
Questions?
I'm not comfortable approving something when we don't know where the property line is, if there's potentially one going through the middle of the building, so I'd like to make a motion to defer until we get that part cleaned up.
We can, I mean, in that case, what we can do is just bring this up at the very, at the next meeting here in a couple of weeks, because there's, there'll be another meeting two weeks from today, and we should have that clarified by then.
Motion to defer.
A second.
Need a second. Steve.
Mr. Chairman, if it would please you and the commission, could I speak to that issue? Is that appropriate at this time?
Yes.
I am Steve Steele with Huddleston Steel Engineering. The D that we submitted to the planning office with this original submittal is for about 22 acres, which includes this plus much of the surrounding property. I think the confusion lies over the tax assessor's office. Quite often, we'll determine that a portion of the property is zoned commercial and is assessed at a commercial value for their taxes. In this case, the tax assessor, in their knowledge or expertise, has determined that two acres are commercial and to be taxed as commercial. The remaining is still taxed at an agricultural or residential manner, but there, there is no property line. I believe there is, there are two tracks by the tax assessor, and that's to keep the taxation straight.
Any comments, Doug?
I'm, basically what we're looking at is, now, I won't say our, we're looking at our GIS mapping, which does show a separate track. Now, typically, from my experience, when they do that, I don't, like he's talking about, if they do assess one part commercial, one part residential, you don't necessarily see property lines in there. Now, like I said, I don't have a problem moving this forward, and we can have it worked out before building permits every issue. It doesn't really affect this part, anyway. It affects where the existing building is, so I don't have a problem with that. But, for whatever reason, this is showing us two separate tracks, even though they're showing us one on the site plan. So, it's, it's a little unusual.
We would respectfully request your consideration. We actually submitted for last month's Planning Commission, and we're not able to get on the agenda. So, Mr. Holton, who is here, Mr. Thomas Holton, and Mr. Cole, his operations manager, both came today in case you had any questions, but they would like to, to proceed.
Doug, if I withdraw my motion, what, what suggested language?
What I would just say is, you know, I mean, approval subject to staff comments, I think, would be appropriate, because that was one of the comments we had, and if we can have that one addressed to our satisfaction, we're fine with that. So, I think that'd be all right.
I withdraw my second.
I want to modify my motion. We'll approve subject to staff comments.
Motion to approve.
And I'll second.
Now, other discussion. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Any other questions? All of us in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number nine, staff reports and other business. A is end of the year work report and work schedules for 2014, and Doug and Eric, I think both of you guys have some stuff for us, so.
Yes, sir. Appreciate you allowing us this time, just take a few minutes to kind of go over the activity that we saw here at the Planning Commission last year. I'll call your attention to the subdivision report for 2013, looks like this. That just kind of gives you an idea of the preliminary plats, any plat extensions, minors, final plats, those kind of things. I think the real meat of the report, though, is on the, the very last page of the report, where you see the chart there, the total number of lots created in major subdivisions. Now, again, under the old definition, that was anything four lots or greater, but what you can see, you know, when we started tracking this, at least this particular chart here back in 2004, you saw we were moving along pretty good, over close to 600, 572, then over seven, close to 750, then down a little bit, then in 2007, it went up to almost 1,200. Not too long after that is when we really saw the economy start to go downhill, and you can kind of see that corresponds to the number of lots we saw created in 2008, all the way really through 2011, when we only saw 60 lots created by major subdivision. Since that time, you can see in 2012, that's gone up to 150, and this past year, it was a little bit higher, but not just a whole lot, but you saw we did create another 161 lots. So, things are beginning to, to pick up. As you see there in the last couple of years, we are seeing more and more activity than we've seen in years past, so that's just something for your information to take a look at. I've also provided a memo from both Eric and myself regarding our work report and our work schedule. You can see some of the things, and I'll let, Eric's going to talk about some of the, some other issues and things that, that they've done over the past year. But, kind of my introductory paragraphs there, you know, what, 2013 is really best described as a year of change for our, for our departments. Our new zoning ordinance took effect at the beginning of last year, which was a significant change in how we handled zoning issues. We also saw the retirement of two long-term employees. Del Corbett, our longtime county engineer, retired, as well as one of our administrative assistants, Sue Young, who worked, I guess, 25, 30 years, or at least, I forget exactly how long. But she was instrumental in handling all of the septic tank permits and everything, and over the last couple of years, came under our department, so handled some of the responsibilities we had there as well. We also had two other employees, Elizabeth Emsley, our assistant planning director, and Todd Sullivan, who was a, one of the stormwater engineers. They left to pursue other opportunities. We filled both those positions with, well, KDP was hired to replace Todd Sullivan. John Cortez also was hired as a new engineering inspector, and Danielle Glouner was, Danielle Glouner was, was promoted to assistant planning director to replace Elizabeth. And then we have also hired Sue Foltz, who was actually working part-time in our office, and we hired her as the replacement for, for Sue Young. You can see some of the completed projects that we had. Of course, the adoption of our new subdivision regulations, you know, we had a, a, a long time, that was a long time coming, but we had a lot of good discussion on that, a lot of public meetings, public hearings on that particular issue, which culminated in the regulations being adopted in August of 2013 with the effective date of October 1st. Of course, the sprinkler issue had to go before the, the Board of Commissioners, but that ultimately was approved as well at their September 12th meeting. Our glitch ordinance, we brought forward, the, a lot of different amendments to the zoning ordinance, as well as some other amendments that were seen on exterior storage, exterior display, and of course, our mezzanine upgrades, as you're seeing here, our technological upgrades, as well as to our office. We've made some computer upgrades to there as well, and our conference room, a large screen TV like this, it's been very, very helpful in having our, our meetings that we have back there, as well as meetings with developers and potential applicants as well. Of course, didn't seem that we, it may not seem we accomplished as much last year, but again, being a year of change and the fact that we were still working on the subdivision regulation, really the last few years, and really, a lot of our work has been on the subdivision regulations and the zoning ordinance, trying to get that forward, so that really took the majority of our time. Which you can see, for the upcoming year, we've identified several other things. We're still working on the Southeast Area Transportation and Land Use Study through the Nashville Area MPO. Actually, I just received an email notification that the next meeting of that committee is going to be in March. Things are moving forward with that. Hopefully, by the end of the year, we'll have some information to present to you to update our major thoroughfare plan. Again, this is being done in conjunction with City of Murfreesboro, Smyrna Laverne, the county, you know, and Eagleville, too, as part of the county, but that's so we can all have our major thoroughfare plans consistent, which has been an issue in the past. Something else that we've looked at, that we'd like to do this year, is update our Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeal bylaws. With the recent adoption of our subdivision regulations being under new zoning regulations as well, just looking through our bylaws, we know that there needs to be some changes, both to the Board of Zoning Appeals and to the Planning Commission, so that's something we'd like to take care of as well. You can see, I won't go in just a whole lot of detail, but some zoning ordinance amendments that we're working on, things like daycares as accessory uses for community assembly uses, looking at the possibility of outdoor entertainment and amusement service category, as opposed to just lumping them all in one category. Solar farm regulations, the Board of Zoning Appeals actually approved a solar farm a few months ago for some property out in the county, and while we want to encourage those uses, we also want to make sure that they're consistently applied throughout the county, so coming up with some regulations for that. We'd also like to look at our borrow pit regulations. We've been under, they were adopted originally in 2010, and pretty much were moved over to our new ordinance unchanged, but we've had some discussions with amongst ourselves, planning engineering staff, and think that there are probably some changes that need to be made for that. Also, the glitch ordinance will make a comeback. I know there's other glitches in there that we need to, to take care of, so you'll be seeing something like that this year. Also, with our amendments to our subdivision regulations, we know there's several issues out there. You know, we still need to, to deal with the fire hydrant distance requirements, as well as the impending adoption of the new building and fire codes. There may be some possible amendments that have to be made to either our zoning or our subdivision regulations for that. That's something that we're going to be studying. Also, we are moving forward with the last thing there, our zoning compliance and building permit integration. Both are, the way a, somebody wants to come and pull the building permit, the way the system works is they come up to our office, they get a zoning compliance form. They get that, and then they take it down to building codes to get their building permit. Well, what ends up happening is, they come up here, and they get the, you know, their information as far as their address, different things like that. Well, then they go down to building codes for their building permit, and they have to enter in the same information. What we're in the process, working with our OIT department, doing is integrating those systems, so kind of what we're envisioning is, you know, we'll put in the information for the zoning compliance form, and we'll give them like a sheet of paper with a number on, or something like that, and they take that down to building codes. Building codes will type in that number, and a lot of that information will already be up there. So, that'll kind of increase efficiency in that regard, and also the amount of staff time and the time that it takes for someone to get a building permit. We're trying to work in that direction right now. They've already started that process. I'm not sure of a, of a timeline as far as when that's going to be completed, but that is moving forward, and that's something that we're, we're really looking forward to. So, that just kind of gives you an idea of some of the things that we're looking at from a planning staff level, and I'll turn it over to Eric to let him handle it.
From the engineering side for 2014, there's really kind of three big projects we're looking at, and the biggest one, from the stormwater standpoint, is in March, our permit requires that we start implementing infiltration, which is statewide. Not, not everyone in the state's coming on in March, but within the next couple of years, everyone will. It's going to be a really big deal. Basically, the first inch of rainfall that hits a site has to stay on site and either go up to the clouds or go into the dirt. It's one or the other, and so the state's going to mandate that, and they have not given us much regulation on how, and especially in our community, where we have, that rock's pretty shallow, and I've never seen water go into it, but they say it'll, hey, it'll work. So, we're going to have some, some challenges with that, because there's going to be some sites, I think, that are, that are probably going to be in trouble, because they're going to want to put a pond somewhere that's not going to work. And so, so that's something that, we're, we're waiting on guidance from TDEC, and they're saying that they're going to give it to us, oh, they've been saying they're going to give it to us for a year, but they're saying spring now. So, when we get that, we're hoping that it's got, we've, we've shared concerns with them about, you know, sinkholes and rock, and some of the issues we have here, and, and we're hoping that, that they're going to at least give us some guidance on what we can do. So, that's a big one for us, and, and when that starts in March, especially in March between that time and when TDEC gives us guidance, it's going to be, I mean, I, I've just got to, I'm probably just going to have to say, one inch has got to stay on site, and, and there may be some sites that need to wait until we get guidance, so, so stick with us through that. We'll, we'll be learning. Even though that, that stuff won't come to you guys as much on the front end now, I'll still try to let you know, because we'll be looking at the engineering before you guys get the master plan, to, to make sure that these sites are going to, you know, we, we look at them enough to make sure it's going to work before, before you guys see it, so I'll keep you guys up to date on what's going on with that.
Eric, how far down the chain will it go? I mean, if we do a minor plat or something?
It'll just be.
For residential?
No, just everything that falls under our stormwater quality requirements, which for us is like 15,000, well, like on a site plan, it's 15,000 square feet of impervious surface, so, which, you know, a lot of like additions and things like that don't fall under, like that, that Holton Concrete we saw, it doesn't fall under it, you know? But, but, you know, bigger, bigger stuff, you know, it, it starts getting, and then all, basically all major subdivisions. If they disturb more than an acre of dirt, then, then they'll fall under that.
Somebody paves, paves their driveway from a gravel driveway. Is that?
Yeah, I mean, gravel is considered pervious, so, you know, that's, that's what the rules are. They say that, so that's just like dirt, but when you put asphalt on it, but when you start talking about a linear distance like that, I mean, to get an acre, 43,000 square feet, you know, 40 feet wide, I mean, it'd take a long, really, long driveway. So, so it's, most driveways don't, don't trigger that, and we, we try to, we're reasonable. We, we try to, to be practical and do all that we can, and, and look at it, try to take a common sense approach.
The state hasn't given you any parameters on what, you're expecting those in March, and then we got to enforce them in March?
We've got to enforce them in March regardless, and we're hoping that they're saying spring. And they've, they've been telling us for years that they were going to give us, give us guidance, and they're, apparently they're working on it, but, but we just don't, you know, if, if a site's solid rock, I just, I don't know what we're going to do. I just don't know what we're going to do, but, but they're, they're going to hold us to our requirement. The, the way that works is, we have a five-year permit, and so, and they basically tell you the things that have to be in that permit, and you can stage them each year, and the March is our, when our, that cycle starts for us, and so, five, well, let's see, 2015 will be our new permit. So, in 2010, when we did the permit, we said, well, in year four, we have to do infiltration, and they were telling us then, you got to put it in this permit. And so, we thought, well, in four years, you know, surely, we'll, we'll have a better idea of what we got to do, and so, well, here we are. So, and, and in 2015, when we do our new permit, we're, they're very likely to give us some things that we may not understand or know, but they basically require that you put it in the permit, so.
It's basically the state coming up with regulations to meet federal guidelines, I assume.
That's it.
And the benchmark numbers were, what, 15,000 square feet and, and an acre? That's sort of what we need to keep in the back of our mind.
Yeah, and, and I'll make sure to let you guys know, I mean, you'll, I mean, when, when something comes in, when we have the first concept meetings on, on these sites, we're looking to see, you know, because that's, that's a big deal for, for an applicant, you know? If they're going to have, like, the landscaping place we saw today, you know, they're having to do it, and so, if, if they didn't have to do that pond, I mean, that would just have been a lot more, you know, parking lot for them, but because they're having to do that pond with the quality stuff, I mean, it's, you know, and I've had to work with the engineer, engineer spent a lot more time on it, so, so it makes it a lot more intensive, but I mean, it's, you know, they're adding, adding well over 15,000 square feet, and so it's, it's inevitable.
About earlier, it was technically agriculture land, too. I remember, it seemed like maybe Craig had brought that up or something. So, they backed off of that. I mean, this is just development.
If it's agriculture, it's safe.
It's safe.
It's, it's safe, yeah. And so, there's, which is, it's pretty gray, because, you know, we've, we've had.
Yeah, we've talked about that. Yeah, we've talked about that.
You know, a lot of instances where, you know, if, if someone wants to build a, you know, 100,000 square foot horse barn, you know, that's maybe got an office on the end of it. But if it's agriculture, it's, it gets away. And so, and that's statewide, I mean, that's, of course, you know, the, TDEC is, I mean, they, they know, they stay away from agriculture. They, they kind of know to. And so, and they've, they're, they're good about that, though. I mean, I'll say, when, when we have issues, because sometimes in those gray areas where it's called agriculture, and you kind of wonder, you know, and the state, they tell us and say, if it's, if they call it agriculture, we won't touch it, so.
Go back to the paving. If that, if he paves a lot with the horse barn, that's still gray area.
It's, I mean, if it's agriculture, yeah. So we, you know, we, I just, I try to be practical about it, you know? You know, there's been a couple of times I've said, really? Come on, I mean, you know, and, but, but I mean, they, you know, we, we have to do what we have to do. But for the most part, people are, I mean...
That's better than what I thought, because, I mean, I was thinking they were getting ready to regulate, you know?
I haven't...
Bound ground. I mean, we've got a problem if we start doing that. I mean, we're going to do silt fence around it, you know, before you do a cornfield or something.
100 acres of corn?
Yeah. I think the, I think the most immediate impact that you'll see in agriculture is, and I don't think it's going to be forced, but I think you're going to see a lot more push for more stream bank buffering, you know, to try to buffer more around the streams to, you know, I don't, I don't think they're, they're going to, you know, some states are a lot more strict about, you know, cattle in streams and things. And I don't, I don't see any near regulation on that, but I think that they'll probably push more stream bank restoration, buffering type programs and things like that. I don't think it's going to be mandatory in the near future, but I think they're probably just doing more to help agriculture, you know, restore stream banks. And I think that's a good thing.
We've, I fenced out, and you know where I live, we fenced out of the creek, actually fenced some rented land out of the creek. If you talk to the local conservationists, they'll tell you, you know, you get concerned it, it's going to grow up so much up and down the creek, it's going to impede the water flow, you know, in a moderate rise, maybe. Not, probably not going to make any difference in a big rise. But they'll tell you to turn the cattle in a couple of di, a couple of times a year and flash graze those creek banks to kind of keep the bushes down, keep the leaves eating off and that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
So it's really not, if you can do it in a manner where you can keep the fence up, it's the biggest thing. If you can do it in that, that, you know, you can probably, it's probably beneficial.
Of course, that's our terrain, you know? We, we have wider floodplain, because we're flatter here, you know, like in Knoxville, you know, the floodplains are, they're deeper, but they're narrower. And so that's, that's the, that's just part of, part of agriculture here, so. But stormwater is definitely, it's, it's changing, and I mean, it has, just think about where we've come in 10 years, you know, from stormwater. We didn't have that many regulations when I first started, and now it's, you know, it's pretty regulated. But, but the state, we continue to work with them, and Katie does a good job of keeping up with current issues, and we'll, 2014, we'll continue to do that, and, and I'll try to keep you guys informed of anything, if I see anything major coming, I will try to make sure you guys understand and know, know what's going on, so. Kind of like Doug had talked about on the borrow pits, we've, engineering has kind of changed how we look at those a little bit and try to become more involved in that process with the BZA, with planning. I guess the way I looked at is, if we could, as much development as we have in our community, they need dirt. We, when you build houses, people want yards and they want good dirt. And a lot of these sites that we build on just don't have it, and so they're going to have to get it from somewhere. Instead of that going on Saturdays or where they hide and do it where nobody knows, you know, I've kind of put out a plea to the building community that, you know, if they'll come in and do these borrow pit resource extraction permits through the BZA and go through the process and do them right, you know, I'm, I'm trying to help engineering-wise as much as possible to eliminate erosion and make sure they understand, you know, the impacts that they could have on, on the property they're doing. And Katie and I are trying to do, I guess, more education to, you know, meet on site, try to be more approachable and available. And we've restructured our, our bond, road bond system with that to make it more, I find more affordable and more practical. And so, so we're really trying to do a better job of, of kind of, something that, that we know has to happen to, to make it where it's easier for the, to go through the process. And the BZA also understands that, that kind of, that they're on board too, and they understand what's going on. And so, so that's, we've seen a few more of these borrow pits come through the system recently, and so, and I anticipate that, seeing more and more of that. And so far, it's been, it's been pretty good. And so they've, they've been pretty honest and kind of let us know what's going on, and we're still bonding the roads and working with Mr. Brooks. He's been great to work with on this, and kind of coming up with a plan with, with how we can monitor this. And so, so I think, even though you guys won't see that, I just kind of wanted to mention that, that it's something that we're, we're starting to play up, pay a lot of attention to, and just trying to work better with the development community, and so far, it's working out real well. The, the third thing, and I guess the biggest, biggest change I have with you guys this year is, and you have in front of you the major active subdivisions list, and we, we talked about this a couple of months ago, but this is, what's in front of you is a condensed version of, of an expanded table that we're using, that we're trying to incorporate engineering and planning also, to have a lot better organizational system for us to keep up with what's going on. Because as you guys know, we have a lot of developments and lots of different names and, and developers and keeping up with everything and where it's at. We have a wonderful inspector that has been doing this for a long time, and his memory is really good, and that's where a lot of this stuff is. And so we're trying to get it on paper, because, you know, he's going to retire one of these days, and we need to start now on getting that information. So, so what you have in front of you, and if there's anything else that you guys think that you would like to see on here, like, so we, we have a, this, this table is very large, and I've just put down some of the things that, that kind of, I thought you guys might want to see, and I'll kind of explain to you is how we've got it there. First, we've got them organized from preliminary approval. So, so I just thought that would be better chronologically for you guys, because it'll go from top to bottom from when you guys saw it. So, for example, like this top one, Stewart Springs, Section 4, Phase 1, that was approved back in August. We put the developer's name. I just thought that might kind of help tie a name with, with the development. And then you see this subgrade proof roll, base stone proof roll, binder, final plat and topping. What we're doing in-house is we're keeping up with, with dates, and we have, we have Xs on all these, but in the future, what we're doing is basically, like on this, let's look down at this, the third one, this Ridge View at Crescent Ridge, Section 1, is approved in June, have the developer's name. And so, when they get their subgrade proof rolled and inspected by our, our office, our inspector makes a, a note that that happened on this date. And so that X will be replaced with a date on all, in the future. And so that would have a date. And then the developer would come in, and they would put base stone down and get their road ready. And once we proof roll that and inspect it, then our inspector would, would submit this to the database and have another date. So we would know when the subgrade was done and when the base stone was done. The binder, of course, that's the first layer of asphalt. We would have, also have the date of that and when that's put down. And then the final plat, typically, that's the way it goes. They put the binder down, and then they come get their final plats so they can start to release lots. So, so on this Ridge View at Crescent Ridge, Section 1, they came back in February of 2011, got their final plat recorded. As you can see, they still don't have topping down, and as you can see, most of them don't. And then the next two are building permits, and I just thought that you guys may want to kind of have an idea of, of if there's, if this one's sitting empty or what percentage is built out. And so, so that one that we're just talking about, they don't have any building permits pulled in that section, but there's 10 lots available. So if you go down to Rachel's Place, Section 2, Phase 3, you see it has 13 building permits pulled and there's 18 building lots. So that kind of gives you an idea of the percentage of, of buildout that we've got there. Now, like Crescent Ridge, Section 1, now, which is down about three quarters of the page, as you can see, it's 39 permits pulled and 43 lots available. That's those that we're starting to, you know, have conversations with the developer about, you know, looking at topping and things like that. Now, that particular one is in the front end of a section that has a lot stuffed behind it, so we're not going to, we don't push them on that. But, but that's the kind of, that's how we're, we in-house are analyzing that, is we're kind of looking at that percentage to see, monitoring the bonds closer on that stuff. So, and then at the very end, we have the road board acceptance. What I was going to do, if it's okay with you guys, like, like this Barrett subdivision, which some of the things got, got checked out there, and it got approved, it was just a cul-de-sac, it got approved in January. I was going to submit this to you guys quarterly, if that's okay, and I would leave this on there for the next quarter so that you guys could look at that and say, okay, well, Barrett subdivision was approved, it's off our books. And so when something's off our books, it'll, it'll stay on here one month, one quarter, and then after that, it'll be off the list. So basically, and this is front and back, everything that's on here is something that we have, basically, we have a bond on, and that it's a public road that the county has not accepted. In the future, now that we have our one-year warranty period, I'll keep it on here till our warranty period's gone, because after the warranty period is when the road board will accept it. So, so it could be on here completely built out, waiting for that one year, and then after the road board's accepted, it'll, it'll go off this list. So, if there's anything else you guys think of that you want to put on here, we've probably already got a column for it, we could, I could add it to this, this list. I just thought I'd give you some of the things that, that I would want to see if I was in your shoes, and so we'll, we'll be glad to, to make this fit your needs or whatever you'd like to see. We were going to send this to you also in your packet, when you, your electronic packet, so that if you want to look at it and have any questions or whatever for the meeting, then it'll be available for that. Our long-term goal with this, one, is just documentation. You know, it's, there's been a lot of these inspections done by our office for many years that, that we know it was in the summer of 2008, but that's probably about all we know on the subgrade and things like that. If we ever have failures, which we hope we don't, it would be really nice to be able to look back and have a little bit more detail about when things happened, you know? And this, that's kind of, that's working with Mr. Brooks at the Highway Department, you know? If something happened in 10 years and we had a, a section of road that didn't act right, it would be interesting to look back, and we could, you know, we could, we could do more analyzation and retrospect, looking at things by having that. So this, this is going to help not just you guys and not just our department, but we think it's going to help with the Highway Department and planning, and we, we think it's going to help, so. But that's, that's all I have for 2014.
Doug, anything else?
Not on that item. I do have one other thing, but if you all had questions on, on either of our reports, and I kind of want to echo what, what Eric just said, you know, if there's anything out there that you would like to see that we're not doing, let us know, because that's probably something that we could do. It's just a matter of knowing if you'd like to see it or not.
I just had one other item I wanted to discuss with you. Typically, we don't talk about the following month's zoning cases, but in this situation, this one's unusual enough that I thought I would talk to you about it a little bit, just so you understand why this is coming to you. This is the, the far west part of Rutherford County, this is Williamson County over here. This is State Route 840, Span Town Road. Highway 96 would be up a little further to the north. I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, I'm backward. Franklin Road is down here, excuse me. This is what's called Newcastle Road. This area right through here, you probably recognize, this is where the Renaissance Festival is, where that castle is, you can see going down 840. A few months ago, we had a gentleman call who was looking to purchase this lot right here where my, where the hand is, right here. And he was wanting to purchase the property, and he does woodworking, cabinet making, those kind of things. He wanted to do that as a home-based business. Well, according to the layers that we have, this green line that comes through here is what separates Williamson County from Rutherford County. So of course, I told him, well, it looks to me like you're in Williamson County, so we wouldn't have any jurisdiction over you. Well, he's called Williamson County, and Williamson County says, you're not ours, you're in Rutherford County. They have the, basically, right in this area is where they show the county line being divided. So, long story short, you know, we had discussions with the, with Williamson County planning officials, we talked with it amongst the, ourselves, with OIT, with the assessor's office, and as it turns out, it looks like this probably is the correct county boundary right through here for this area. Now, when we did the comprehensive rezoning for the county, we used this green line, thinking that that was the accurate line. So you can see kind of where the, where the rub is at that point, you know? We're thinking, we're saying that this is what's in the county, that Williamson County's saying that's not ours, it's yours. The assessor's office is pretty much agreeing, yeah, it looks like that this is ours and not Williamson County's. So what we have is this area, kind of this, this shaded area right through here is essentially unzoned at the current time. When you look at their deeds, they're all, they all say they're in Rutherford County, they pay Rutherford County taxes, their kids go to Rutherford County schools, so it appears that they are in Rutherford County. So what we're proposing to do, and I've sent letters to all the property owners that are impacted, I think there's about eight or nine of them that are impacted, I have heard from about three of them, and once you explain to them what's going on, no one really has any real issues with it. But all we're proposing to do is extend the RM zoning, which is basically all this orange right through here, just extending it to this area right through here to match up with Newcastle Road, so that these areas, this area would be zoned. This really should have no impact as far as taxes, really shouldn't have any impact as far as use, there's just no, if, if we would have realized that this was the correct boundary on the front end, we, this is what we would have zoned to to begin with. So all we're doing is extending that RM zoning to these tracks, the remainder of these tracks that apparently are in Rutherford County when we didn't think they were. So that's a little unusual in that regard. Again, that's why we're bringing it to your attention here tonight, or this morning, I guess, just so you've kind of got that, you know what's coming. Basically, we're going to bring that up in February. We've got three other cases. Not sure if any of them are really going to be controversial, and I did want to ask you, typically, by the time we get to this meeting, we know it's going to be on the rezoning meeting for the next month. Was that something you'd like us to do, is just kind of give you an overview of zoning cases for the following month? It doesn't matter, if you guys are fine with that, it's easy for us to do.
Is this Newcastle Road or is this the Span Town Road?
It's Newcastle Road. You see, it comes up right here. I think it switches the Span Town, because here's Span Town in this area, it's somewhere around in here, it switches names.
Yeah.
But again, this one being a little unusual, you know, and I, I won't say that this will be the last one we ever see, but for now, we know that, we at least know this one needs to be rectified. But that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
It's a good idea, just to, I think, Doug, just to give us a heads up on what's coming and more information we have, probably the better we can be prepared and...
Absolutely.
So, continue if you don't mind.
We'll do that.
That's an unusual situation. The first thing that came to Steve in my mind is who's paying taxes on that?
Yeah, they're, they're assisting Rutherford County.
Okay. If they're paying Rutherford County taxes, then...
They're Rutherford County.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, February the 10th, 6:00 PM at the courthouse, second floor. Like to recognize Zane Cantrell being here this morning and any particular reason you're here? Zane, you have any comments, anything to say?
Just really interested in this great body here, so...
You, uh...
See if I have any more friends.
Zane is a long-term member and chairman of the BZA and their job, we just made their job a lot harder this past year and, and, and much, much more meaningful and you're welcome for the additional responsibility and I'm sure that the increase in pay is appreciated as well.
I'm just glad he still calls us friends.
Yeah.
Can I ask one question about the bar pit? Well, the bar pits go with the BZA, but if they, but if they wanted to come and be rezoned, he would come?
I think, I think it would take more of probably a quarry operation to be, to need a rezone.
Yeah.
And that, and that's kind of the part of what Doug was talking about. When I say borrow, that means I'm going to give it back, right? And so, we call borrow pit something they're not going to put dirt back in, they're, they're pulling dirt out of. So, that's something we're going to try to look at. I mean, just the wording of it a little bit is, you know...
Sort of like your neighbor borrowing your lawnmower, you don't ever get it back.
Right, right, yeah, yeah.
Eric, on those borrow pits, I mean, if you go down deep, can you haul in overburden and fill back and then bring it back to grade? I mean, is that permissible?
Yeah, you know, I...
Where you're essentially swapping good dirt for, you know, under dirt and then grass it back over on the top?
Don't, I guess the only guiding rule on a resource extraction that we use is, and there's only really one caveat to this, if you, if you take dirt off of your property, you basically need a resource extraction. Now, the caveat to that is subdivision because anything's in a subdivision, you know, we don't, we don't require, you know, like this, this subdivision that came through today, you know, they're going to move dirt all around, but so we don't require them to do it. They kind of fall outside of it, but, but outside of agriculture, if, you know, if you move dirt. So, and there's discretion of that too, you know, how people call, "Well, I'm going to take, you know, two pickup truck loads, you know, out of my flower beds, you know, do I need a permit for that?" No, you know, we, we try to be practical and look at what's, what's obvious, but, but as far as replacing it, yeah, I mean, that, that would be great and that, that would be something that, that if an applicant wanted to do that, you know, would basically present that to the BZA, I think would make that, it would make it a different scenario than just pulling it. Because we look, we do, we do a reclamation bond also to make sure that what they're going to do is, is going to look presentable, which is difficult too. I mean, I'll be honest with you, I mean, my opinion of what looks good, I ask my wife, what looks good and what somebody else thinks may not be the same thing, you know? And so, so we, we're trying to come up with some, some clearer regulations of, of, you know, what's, what's appropriate reclamation and things like that. And so, so far, we, you know, most, most people don't want to leave a moonscape, you know, they, they want to do it right. And so, so I, I think that would be the perfect scenario, you know, to, to pull out the, the better dirt and replace it with, you know, with fill. So, timeliness is an issue too, you know, how the, the permits are good for six months from the BZA and then there's a three-month extension we can do in-house and then they can go back and request again, so...
Basically, they can come once a, once a year almost because you're going to lose about three months during the winter and they can come back up first of the year, do it, and y'all can do the extension in-house.
Yeah. One, one thing that, that I think the BZA has done a good job of setting up is they